Good evening and welcome to February 20th, 2024, Common Council City, Connersville. All rise for the pledge allegiance, let my councilman Brian Robb.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. I'd like to welcome everyone, remind you to please turn your cell phone ringers off, we will begin with roll call.
Councilman Robb?
Here.
Councilman Gray? Councilman Collins?
Present.
Councilwoman McQueen?
Present.
Councilwoman Barrett? Councilman Williams Jr.?
Present.
Councilwoman Phillips?
Present.
Okay, everyone has the minutes from the February 5th, 2024, regular meeting, are there any additions or corrections to those? If there aren't any corrections, we'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion.
Have a motion second, all favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carried, we went down to new business, we're gonna go ahead and switch some order up, I'm gonna start with Adam Stone, since he's on Zoom first.
Good evening, Mayor, this is Adam, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Alright, I'm going to share my screen here for those in the room. My understanding is you all have a printed copy of that as well, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Okay, very good. Let me share my screen. Okay, and can someone in the room there confirm that you can still see this?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, awesome. So, tonight, I'm excited to walk through the second version of our three-part educational series here for the public around the city of Connersville's budget process and budget summary. So this is an open workshop to bring more transparency and education into the budget, and is really gearing up for council for just preparedness in preparation of the 2025 budget development, which will start later this spring. At the last session, we looked at revenue sources of the city, various different options and trends for each. Today, we're on point two, which will build on revenues and will look at expenses and long-term obligations of the city as well. This is, again, specifically looking at the city of Connersville as opposed to the utilities for this series. So we'll be looking at spending by department, by fund. We'll also be looking at a high level of long-term obligations, such as city pensions, deferred maintenance, other post-employee benefits, or OPEB, and long-term debt. The next regularly scheduled council meeting will conclude with a open conversation on long-term plans. These would be key projects, initiatives, and programs that the council, mayor's office, and departments want to pursue funding for the years 2025 to 2027. This platform would be an opportunity for bigger programs and projects that would be a multi-year budget effort. So it may be something that require one, two, or three years of sustained funding to be able to achieve. I wanted to start tonight with just a record correction of the revenue presentation. We had a slide talking about the local income taxes and how they were shared. We received medication from the county auditor that supported and supplied information that corrected that. So, in fairness to them, I wanted to correct and set that record straight. So, the above amounts are the 2024 estimates, certified by the Department of Local Government Finance. And local income tax that residents pay, Bay County, they are, while they're collected at the county level, there's different types. So, I'm not sure if you can see my cursor or mouse, but you can see essentially the first 1% tax on local incomes go to what's called certified shares. These amounts are distributed to all units, rather than schools, as a percent of adjusted levy. So the levy or the property tax that's essentially billed for that unit, whatever their relative share is of the total levy, that is how certified shares are distributed. The city of Connersville receives approximately 50% of that total of the certified shares amount. The next 1.12% goes to property tax relief. This is an enacted taxpayer credit, and it's above and beyond the tax caps, that effectively shift property tax burden from property, real property owners, to local income taxpayers. So in that case, if you own property in Bay County, you may see an additional deduction on your property tax bill, above and beyond the tax cap legislation that is specifically mentioned as property tax relief credits. Those amounts, while they're a real personal property tax deduction or credit, they are an additional local income tax that's collected. The city receives approximately 63% of the total property tax relief. And then as far as the jail local income tax, that is the pay for servicing capital costs for the county jail, that's 100% Bay County. And then the special purpose is a ed tax, and the city currently receives about a 12% of the total amount collected on that portion, and that's used to pay principal and interest on the 2013 swimming pool bonds. Interesting enough, those are set to expire soon with their final payment approaching. So, taking all of that consideration, the county share of all local sources, when you also consider this 12% that the city is temporarily receiving, is about 47%. With the city not receiving that long-term, this would obviously be different, but taking that into consideration, it's just below the 50%, the city of Connersville is the next highest recipient. So, just wanted to clear that up. Going towards expenses, this is the general fund budget by category. So again, for informational purposes, for those that are seeing this for the first time, the budget is broken up into funds, and then departments, and then categories. So funds are buckets of dollars that are used for special purposes. Departments are the various different functional organizations within the city. And then the categories are different groups of like expenditures. So the largest category in the general fund, representing almost 80% of the total budget, is personal services. That category goes for salaries, wages, benefits, pensions, these are for the full and part-time employee costs. The next largest category is services and charges, it's 17%. That's for dues, subscriptions, professional services, insurance renewals, utilities that the city pays for its own purchase power, as well as rental, equipment, land, et cetera. Supplies would be the direct, any direct purchased materials and goods, where the city directly purchases those items. Classic example would be like office supplies, gasoline, et cetera. And then lastly, capital represents any long-lived assets that were placed in service. So these percentages, for the most part, follow what we see across the state of Indiana, with capital being very low from the general fund. Utilities are usually in the range of about 5% to 10%. Services and charges, anywhere between 15% to 25%. What is a notch elevated here is the 78% in personal services. That's usually not much lower than maybe 60% or 65%, but it is on a higher-end range. And all that means is that, over time, as those costs increase along with others, it'll just constrain the other categories over time. So, looking at it by department, and again, these are the different organizational units. Each one of these are a separate budgetary unit within the general fund. Public safety, which is defined, at least in this slide, as the fire, police, and EMS departments, represent just short of 75% of the total. Administrative is then 14%, and trash and DOT is at 12%. So you can, and the other way to think about this is from a budget priorities perspective, nearly 75 cents on the dollar in the general fund is being allocated to public safety, with the largest from the general fund being the fire department, then police, and then EMS. So, putting all this together and thinking about, you know, years to come, there's been discussion, if you remember at the revenue session we did, we talked about sustainability, and budget sustainability has a lot of different terms. What I, how I think about that is, what is a growth rate that we can realistically depend on year in and year out for planning purposes, without really new structural change, without new taxes or any sort of new legislation? And the revenue picture for the city puts that in about 3% to 5%, okay? And there's some different factors there that would weigh one more than the other. But in any event, 3% to 5% is what we would, you know, target from a planning perspective. Well, just this week, there's been a lot of talk about the Federal Reserve and inflation, and it's coming in a little bit higher than folks projected. I think last year, it came in at about 3.1%, so, and that's looking at sort of costs associated with operating the city, so, on average, across all goods and services. So, the 3% is in line with what we're seeing nationally and locally. What I would, what we've got here is three different potential futures. These aren't exhaustive, but I looked at 2024 to 2028 to get a current and four-year projection, and just looked at the general fund, actual budgeted revenues, actual budgeted expenses, at different growth rates. So the first chart over here, if you can see that okay, the blue is the revenue, red is expenses. And you can see that if we did a 3% across the board, so if revenues grew by 3% and expenses and other things grew by 3% across the board, we just essentially stay largely where we're at. We've got a slight budgeted deficit right now, nothing that can't be absorbed, but it is, on paper, expenses do actually exceed revenues. So, 3% for revenue, 3% expenses, essentially just keep that trend on track, on a budgetary basis. But I wanted, where things get interesting is if we're slightly different, right? So, in this case, if the revenues grow by 3%, all other expenses grow by 3%, but personal services grow at 5%, you can see the deficit actually grows quite significantly in this one fund alone. So what starts out as a really kind of trivial deficit here, by the end of the five-year period, becomes a pretty significant annual deficit that would have to be addressed. And that's at a 5% personal services growth rate. When you consider, you know, a 3% COLA, any kind of increase in pension contribution rates, which you'll see later, health insurance renewals, not to mention additional part-time staff or additional full-time staff. That can, that 5% can get reached pretty quickly. And then conversely, if, to show you just the sensitivity, if we had 5% revenue growth, 5% expense growth on personal services, and 3% on everything else, we have this sort of sustainable thing where not only do revenues exceed expenses slightly, so the budget would be fully covered, but you'd have that 5% personnel growth as well. So, from my perspective, this is really where we want to try to get. I know that, you know, employee growth and retention is a strategic priority for Connersville. So being able to allocate dollars to that is important. And then therefore, being able to achieve closer to a 5% average revenue growth is going to be important. And there's a lot of strategies, I know you have one on your agenda tonight. I commend you all for trying to look at those types of things to improve your odds. So, continuing on, the, looking at those three different scenarios, you can see the same three up here, we have the 3% across the board, we have the 3% revenue and 5% services growth, and then 5% revenue, 5% services, 3% everything else. On this colored legend, you can see the general fund reserves. So, again, the minimum would be about 16%. We'd really like to be at 25% or higher. We're real close to that right now in 2024. If we do the 3% across the board, because the expenses exceed revenues, we see cash reserves depleting. If we see the 3% revenue growth, the 5% services, we'll see that accelerate quite dramatically to an unsustainable level. And conversely, if we can find this sweet spot between modest revenue growth and modest personal services growth, then what we'll see is we'll find this sort of line here where we plateau, and then we actually stabilize. So this is why we would define this as a sustainable option, because it's not aggressively increasing cash or aggressively spending it down. It's level, it's predictable, and it'll make you all, and it'll put you all in a position where you can fund operations for a long time. So as far as debt outstanding, there's actually just two. So there's the 2023 GEO bonds, which was the fire truck, police car, and park improvements, the $1,845,000, it was just closed in December. And then, as mentioned, the special local income tax ed bonds for the swimming pool, those are set to expire at the end of this year. Looking at pension and post-employment benefits, there's a lot of information on this slide, I'll go through this bit by bit. So, the, with the city of Connersville, there's two different types of pension plans that the full-time employees are a part of. There's the civilian plan, which is essentially anyone who's non-sworn, public safety, in that, or, in other words, they're not in the 1977 police and fire pension plan. In that case, the employer contribution rate is 11.2% of their pay. Whereas, on the public safety, for all non-civilian positions, they currently have an employer contribution rate of 19.1%. I believe the employee also has to put in approximately 6% or so unemployment rate, but the employer side is what we're focused on, the budget side. What I will point out is, you can see in 2023, the police and fire pension contribution rate, from the city's perspective, was 17.5% of every dollar in salary. And that had been constant for many years. 2024 and 2025, you can see that starting to trend higher. I am not a pension expert, but what I can tell you is I do not think this trend, unless we have just incredible market returns, I think this trend you'll see over time continue for a couple of factors. One, there may be more entering in retirement, so there's more demand on pension benefits. And then secondly, the pension benefits are largely calculated by the salary of those positions. So, across the state of Indiana, salary pressure upward on public safety salaries. So I think that's a trend that you'll see continue. And then, the city of Connersville offers retirees medical benefits as well. In 2024, those totaled $333,000 for police retirees, and another $325,000 for fire retirees. So that's a significant benefit from post-retirement that's in the budget. I have two more slides, appreciate you bearing with me. The, one is the, you know, I know there's been conversation about public salaries and trying to retain and make sure, and that's important, important. We want to try to do what we can to provide options for that. With that said, we have to balance the budget realities of that. And, so we mentioned these two different types, civilian, non-civilian. I looked just at public safety personnel, and this is police, fire, and EMS. And if we did an extra $5,000 per full-time employee across that, then the salary increase would be about $385,000 in year one. The increased employment taxes in Medicare that would be related would be an additional just shy of $21,000. The pension contributions would be about $54,000. So before looking at any additional incremental changes to holiday pay, cert pay, overtime, anything like that, you're looking at about $460,000 per year. And those would, should be viewed not as one-time cost, but as very permanent recurring cost that typically will increase over time, based on whatever the cost of living adjustment is in the future. Secondly, there are significant budget resources going to the health insurance fringe benefits, and those are listed there, they're just shy of $2.9 million for those 77 positions this year. So, and then you can see the footnotes in my detail down below. So this is very conservative, and it is, there are certainly extra incremental items that would be associated with this. It's in the ballpark of what the impact would be. And then, lastly, I wanted to leave you with some calls to, you know, calls to action. And I tried to put this in order of whom rule, so, trying to put this in the realm of what could this council do to sort of help? And what I didn't hold on here was, you know, pursue programmatic revenues, right? So any sort of departmental revenues that are not real estate taxes or local income taxes, but are going to create new diversification in the revenue stream of the city is, I would say, is biased towards favorable, with understanding that each program may not be fitted for you all, but I would definitely be open to hear those. Secondly, the city has a cumulative capital development fund rate. It is well beneath the amount that we established at. State law requires you now to reestablish that to the max. It's been a suggestion of ours for the last couple of years. It's about a $60,000 to $70,000 per year revenue adjustment. This is money that used to go to ADA sidewalks that was cut a few years ago. There was even discussion today via email about some potential traffic signals and such, now, those were paid from a different fund. But, in any regard, this is something that's very common, if you have this, that's at the cap, and would be something that would just take this council reestablishment. Now that would need to be done relatively soon, so we would ask the council their direction on that. And then the others, not sure of the feasibility with this, we'd have to explore it, but that special bit bond, it's about $150,000 or more that the city is currently receiving. That would go away when those bonds are redeemed. It would be exploration and a discussion to see about, is there another project, another partnership there that can be done? Those resources. And the third point is, you can shift levy. So the property tax levy is really discretionary, fund-to-fund, and each year, each budget cycle, it can be allocated around within the max. Now, what I would call out is this is very much left-hand, right-hand. So while it is good to sort of balance out and move that around, if there's not budget change or within like aviation, cemetery, street, or parks, if they're relying on that levy, shifting away from that really would just kind of create problems there. You know, impact fees, road impact fees on new development is something we're seeing as a theme. It's just, again, trying to make sure that new development and growth is paying for their impact so that current taxpayers and ratepayers aren't paying for that growth. And then lastly, I know there's some discussions about sort of a county-wide public safety law. That would be, you know, something that would definitely involve Bay County, but it would have a massive impact as well. Conservatively, we're estimating that at about $580,000 per year in city benefit. And the county would see approximately the same. So, I'm gonna pause there, I know I covered a ton. I appreciate everybody for bearing with me, and I wanted to pause and see if there are any questions.
Hey Adam, talk about that house bill I read to you this afternoon, I know you looked at it a little bit, where one of the problems we're having is that 4% cap they put on us this year is for two years. That's gonna hurt us bad, but they're also looking to do some other legislation on the growth levy appeal, which we did, we qualified for it until they changed it, and now they're looking to change it again, which will make it even more difficult for us.
Yeah, Mayor, you're exactly right. So there's, in addition to property tax caps, there are other active bills that are currently in legislative session at the State House that would continue to constrain communities, specifically as it relates to property tax revenue, which is right now the city of Connersville's number-one revenue source in its general fund, which funds 75% of its public safety budget. The one you mentioned is that for 2024 and 2025, there was a 4% levy cap. So prior to that, the, that growth rate was established based on the average non-farm payroll growth over the prior six years. As you've probably seen, incomes have been increasing, so that would have led to a larger possible increase in your property tax revenue. Instead, the state legislator capped that at 4%. So, these aren't exactly the same numbers, but your local income tax for the same period increased 8%, but your levy was capped at 4%, essentially half the growth. So that's one bill. The other bill right now, the last two years, we have been pursuing levy appeals, growth appeals. Connersville's just missed barely by basis points the last two years at the 2% hurdle. There's a bill right now that would double that to a 4% hurdle rate, so it makes it essentially twice as hard to achieve. The other is relative to redevelopment commission.
We lost you, Adam.
Adam, we've lost you.
Growth, respect. And from state legislation passed and current, it is challenged. And I think it's in any community's best interest in Indiana to try to diversify away from that as a primary funding source.
We lost you a little bit on that last bit there, but I think we kind of got the gist of it. One of the reasons we're bringing this, we wanted to educate everyone on the income side, because we're facing a lot of challenges, in particular with our public safety pay, or the way that, as low as they are, we're losing them. We want you to see the big picture, we're trying to plan, I don't want to plan year to year, I want to plan four or five years out. So everything we do is sustainable going forward. And even if we're gone, the next group coming in has a sustainable plan going forward. And we really don't know what that looks like right now. Every time we turn around, it seems like we keep getting capped from the state legislator. And we're just trying to come up with solutions to some of our problems. So, this is a time where I'm asking for input, so we have directions, and, because each, Adam gave us several different things to go for, but if those aren't directions you want to pursue, then we've got to find another direction. We just kind of try to brainstorm, what can we do to increase our side so we can provide the same services to our community? So, that's where I, Commissioner Strong, I'm glad you're here. Because this pertains to you guys as well, so, I mean, you're gonna be facing the, you are facing the exact same problem, so, I appreciate you being here, sir. I just need some thoughts on direction on, because we're getting ready to start the budget planning season. I know it seems like it's early, but this is when we start every year. I know it seems like it's early, but this is when we start every year, and we start diving into it deep. It's a several-month venture diving into this. We do know our insurance premiums are going up. Do you remember how much that was, off the top of your head, percent noise? I don't remember yet.
It was 11%?
It was like 50 grand, so.
Forty-two thousand total, but I think it was like 11%.
So that, that was just our liability insurance, let alone we know what health insurance is going to do next year. Make sure I'm correct on my numbers. They came in at 17% increase, and we got them down to five?
Or six.
Five or six. We know the increases are coming. We're trying to hold, we negotiate to get them down the best we can, but the problem is the inflationary rate of increases, you can see what a 5% increase does to us if we're not careful. And we're already behind the, well, we went through 12-plus years with zero salary increases, and now we're trying to play catch-up. When you go for 12 years with no salary increases and you're trying to play catch-up, we're already behind the eight ball. And with 78% already going towards that, that 22% for everything else is not much. So we're researching every avenue we can. I'm talking to several different mayors, just trying to see, hey, what are you guys doing? I mean, what are you, what are you doing that we're not doing? Just trying to find out some different answers, so. Need some thoughts and input on direction so Adam and I can start diving into this and working on it, because we establish a cum cap is one thing, but that doesn't really help salaries. That just goes towards.
Infrastructure.
Infrastructure. Like, we use them for sidewalk placement, ADA ramps, stuff like that. The bonds, that's really on the county. I'm not for sure what you're going to do with your bond for your courthouse. Shifting the levy to me is, the Park Street Aviation Cemetery already bare bones.
We already do that. We've already done that.
Shifting everything.
For the last eight years, shifting.
Impact fees are something we can do, but, I mean, I don't know if we get, you know, we've had one new development on a road in how many years, Brad? A long time. I don't know how much we're going, in as far as the city, we don't have a whole lot of space we can develop new roads. Or the public safety local income tax, which would be the county as well, we'd have to go in on that, but that's another option. Now, devil's advocate with that is, we already have a high county tax rate, we know that. But even in a $5,000 raise, that still doesn't make us competitive. It gets us a step in the right direction. $5,000 raise sounds like a lot of money, but we're that far behind. So we're just trying to throw out different options, some things we want to do, because we're growing. It'd have been nice to be able to collect the growth that we got, but we're not allowed, so we've got to find another solution. And I'll be honest, I don't see that problem getting fixed. I have warned legislator, I said, you've set up a atomic bomb in two years, because you've restricted our growth. We're growing for two years. What happens in year three when it's non-restricted? Now it looks like everyone's taxes went through the roof. So I've got a feeling that more restrictions are going to come, because they don't want that. It's understandable, I get that side of it. But we also have to stay competitive so that we have good fire police, EMS, and parks, and streets, and everybody, so. I need some input from council on thoughts and direction. And Adam knows too.
What would the public safety income tax look like?
Adam?
If I'm here, can you say that one more time? I heard the public safety, but I couldn't hear the first part.
What would the public safety local income tax look like?
Yeah, so it would be, we, we assumed a, let me actually share my screen again. I know my Wi-Fi is a little sketchy, so let me know if, if you can still hear me okay. Can you hear me all right?
Uh-huh, yes.
Okay. It is right here. Okay. So, so what we assumed, and this would be a, we could provide a potential timeline if it weren't for Jeff, so there would be county, county council approval of this and enactment. It has to be approved by both the city and the county by October 1st. It would at earliest be able to be effective for January for salaries paid January 1st, 2025 and thereafter, so it, it could be just collected and distributed as early as next year. And traditionally speaking, these are usually in the neighborhood of, you know, .25, 25 basis points, a quarter of a percent of your salaries. So they're in the realm of these sort of special lit benefits already, so the one that's currently going to jail in the special purpose. So there would just be an additional type, that would be public safety, and it would generate in the order of about 1.2, 1.1 million dollars, of which would be allocated by same rationale, so by levy, so the city would receive about 50% of that total. I, I hope that helped, that helps, and I'm happy to work with your council to prepare a tentative timeline of steps if you're interested.
Is that your answer to the question? You want to know what it looks like to the ratepayer?
You know, like, would, would the taxes go up 1%, 1%, on the dollar, or?
Quarter.
Quarter percent.
Quarter percent. Works for me.
So Adam, somebody making $50,000, how, what would that be, what would their?
Yes, it's math, Rosemary. I appreciate the math. Give me one second.
Twenty-five.
Fifty thousand, it would pay, it would be $125.
A year.
A year.
A year.
So individually, you really wouldn't see it very much.
So let's say, let's say that $580,000 goes through, and we immediately did it for first responders. How do we know that at the current level that the budget is now to maintain insurance and pay and that kind of thing, how do we know for sure that we're going to sink $600,000 right back into it and increase that budget? And say we still stick that $600,000 there, but then we take $300,000 back from the general fund and repurpose it, technically, public safety only went up $300,000. How do we know that we're going to be at our level now and are going to benefit from that to continue to keep them?
Yeah, I can, I can address.
Where's the guarantee in that?
Yeah, I can address that concern. I, that's actually a pretty common, common concern, so council, I think it's wise to bring it up. There are, because of the special purpose nature of the tax, it will largely be committed and restricted to public safety expenses. But you are correct, there's, there's, there is an opportunity to sort of backfill that, right? Shift it. So what I would say, if that's a concern of council, of you or more of you, then you can restrict that. Also, your safeguard is ultimately council approves the budget, which includes the revenue budget as well. So you could, you could make it a requirement for approving the budget that they show, you know, they show you that, that plan, so you can make sure that that is additive.
Did I answer your question?
Trying to. There'll be more to ask later on that.
Oh, that's, this is what this, this is.
We'll just have to see that as it comes along. I'm not going to beat it to death now.
No, I just want to make sure we got everything answered. The best approach we want to go.
I think we should, or at least in my opinion, I think we ought to see how that looks going forward before any approval, because, again, as you said, four years from now, six years from now, how do we know that that, the budget, if we, if we just add this to the current budget, it goes up 60,000, or 600,000, right? But how do we know that this is not going to get undercut, 300,000, and then we go right back into the same hole again, and then we lose more experience, we lose more staff, because, oh, we're allowed to shift this money now, and now we're taxing people for, well, it looks like this, and it's a false pretense.
That's understood, that's a good question. It's how it's written up, that's for sure.
Right. It looks great, and it's a great thing to maybe.
We just want to show you what the numbers would look like.
Right, but I'm worried about the backend, where, where's that extra money going to end up going? Yes, we need it for sure. We need to keep our staff, but at the same time, we ain't going to keep them if we plug this in to make it sound good, but then take money out from the backend and shift it somewhere else and spend it elsewhere.
There's two things that we're trying to plan for, and I can answer probably some of this now, but, which, again, this is just brainstorming, so it's not set in stone, so.
Right.
Don't take anything as saying it's going to be fact. We got two flaws that we have. One is our pay and our facilities and our equipment. We're trying to fund equipment, it's for fire truck, $1.8 million. We'd like to start establishing funds, so whatever we don't use, so if that collects $580,000, you can see in this rough numbers, you're at $450,000 for budget impact. I'd like to see the rest that go towards a fund for equipment, to help offset some of our equipment cost. That's how I would like to see it personally, but, because there's, every time we need equipment, like our hoses for the fire, Nate's out there now, hey Nate, you out there? I'm going to pick on you.
It's all right.
Our last hoses, did we buy them brand new?
Uh, no.
No, we got them from another department, because we couldn't afford new hoses.
Well, we haven't bought new hoses in 12 years.
No, we have some hose that was manufactured in 1991.
So we, we know we got equipment problems. Our trucks are all 25-plus years old.
Right.
Except the new one we just bought, coming in. When we got our mask, we didn't have any funds saved for those. That was $280,000? Um, we was able to use grant money, and we used ARP dollars to offset the rest of that. Those won't be there next time, so what I want to do is start establishing a fund so that, we'll probably never use the fund in this group, but whoever follows us will be saying, thank God they set that up, because now we got these cup coming expenses, and we've got money to do it. Our radios were the same way.
And I agree with you, but what would get us back in the same hole we're in is if they take the $600,000 now, four years from now, take away a portion of that, then they're going to cut from the equipment fund again, so we need something to guarantee that.
What do you mean, take away?
So the general fund, okay? You, you, you have money in there now.
Oh, you mean take money out of their budget from the general fund shift over?
And then you're back to the same levels that you're at now.
Then we're not, then we wouldn't increase salary, because it wouldn't do any good.
I know, but I'm trying to look at who could.
Four years out, I got you.
Adjust.
I think that's how it's written up in the legislation if we do that.
May I have one other thing, please?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I, I think it's a good concern.
It is.
Admittedly, I think it's a, a good, a good concern and safeguard. I, I think that there are ways both in the local approvals, in the actual establishment and rate, I believe you could dedicate that and then make it to where a part of the budget adoption criteria. The council could literally adopt a policy that established a budget rule that it will, it won't, you know, adopt a budget based on certain criteria. So I think those two give you reasonable assurances, and then second, secondly, from a practical matter, I think it's, I, you know, assuming the local income tax was used to fund pay raises, those aren't going to go away, and there's no other revenue to do it. So assuming that once the raises are granted, that's going to be a permanent obligation at growth time, but I think that gives you another sort of safeguard, is that it's going to be, it's going to, it's going to be dependent on to pay those salaries. Otherwise, if, if that money was shifted, those positions would, would not have a funding
Is there a criteria? Does this get voted on every year?
Yeah, I think it sounds like there's enough questions. I'm happy to, to kind of look at that and, and come back with, with, at your next meeting, we can have a proposed approval timeline of what the steps would be, both at the city level and then at the county level, as well as we can work with your, we can work with Jeff, your local council to look at some language that would address that concern.
That'd be great.
I agree.
Okay, we're on it.
Good questions, Shaven.
Yep.
Any other questions and comments? I mean, we're, I'm open to anything. Adam and I brainstorm this a lot, so.
I just think when you come back with your ideas and stuff, we, we also need to just, like they were mentioning earlier, I know it's $125 annually, but looking at the impact that it causes to each taxpayer at the end of it.
Correct.
Happy to do that. So we'll look at the timeline, we'll look at some language, and then we'll look at sort of impacts by different salary tier.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just want to say thank you. I know these are long sessions on the educate, but I hope they are information, informational. And the next and last session that we're going to do is on more long-term planning, so I would encourage you each to think about that, and if there is a specific project, either in your district or your area, that you, you really want to see changed or improved, please, please let us know, and we'll, we'll try to make sure to include that. Otherwise, we'll, we'll have a brainstorming session then. I, I hope you all have a great rest of your meeting, and I appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you, Adam.
Thanks, Adam. Right.
All right. I know that can be long, but it's good deep dive, and I get, I'm getting comments from the public, it's extremely excited that we're taking this deep dive. They can understand the government finances, and they see the struggles, and they understand why things get done, why they don't get done, so I appreciate Adam doing this. Okay, it's moving down to item B, which is approval pending ordinance 3936, rate increase for parks. Why don't you want to come up and talk about this?
So this goes along the lines of what Adam was talking about. When I met with him last June to start talking about the park budget, this was one thing that he really wanted me to focus on, is the park fee schedule. And when I started diving into it, I realized that a lot of it had not been updated since 2012. I think it's the one that Rosemary had sent me over, and I compared the prices that we have. And so everyone should have the letter of request, and then this one would be the approved of park fee schedule if it is approved. But the recommendations that I have are to increase our rental rates, and those are listed for each building. And then we also, our board discussed the pool, and we, we were really looking at the age requirements for the pool. And we have looked into what the school system is doing and feel like it would be appropriate to follow along with what the school system guidelines are that they adopted in, I believe it was this year or maybe last year, for the school year, last school year. And that was for 14 and older can participate or attend school events without an adult. And so our recommendation is to do that with the school as well, or with the pool as well, is to change our age restrictions from 10 years old to 14 years old. And, you know, we feel we're there to watch over the safety of the patrons that come to the pool. And if it is younger than 14, we turn into more of a babysitting service than we are monitoring the safety for those who are swimming in the pool. And we had a lot of issues last year in breaking up fights and different things like that, that, you know, our lifeguards should not be responsible for those things. They are, they are there to be responsible for the lives of the patrons that are swimming in the pool, to make sure their safety is first concern. So the board approved it, that we raise it to 14. We also have in the past had warning stipulations, and it's like kind of a three strikes, you're out. And one thing that when we met individually, we talked about, like, you get one warning, and then you're, and then you're not coming back for the summer. You know, they should be able to maintain their ability to be good father at the pool. So that was one thing also. So with that age change, it also changes the individual's. that was one thing also. So, with that age change, it also changes the individual season passes for the summer. So, um, it used to be you could be, you could get an individual season pass from age three up. And so, we'd like to change that to age 14 and up, because no one should be at the pool individually without an adult under the age of 14. So, um, if they want to get a family pass for those who are, you know, under the age of 14, then they can get the family of three pass and, um, come with an adult and, and that kind of thing. So, um, that's the change in the season passes for the pool. Those rates, um, we are requesting to bump those up just slightly as well. And, um, and then discovery camp registrations, um, go up to $35 and then the per day, um, fee, uh, goes along with what we were talking about, what Adam was talking about. Um, in order to maintain good staff, um, our staff, they do a fabulous job with our summer discovery camp kids. And, um, we wanna make sure that we can keep them coming back year after year. And so, we wanna be able to pay them well as, as well when they work for us. So, um, this, this rate will help us to, um, recoup some of those costs in our salaries for our summer camp, camp counselors. Um, the sports registration fee, I've been talking about this for quite some time now. I talked about it last fall. Um, our insurance is going up and so, uh, that's the reason for the increase. This is, is not just because the insurance is going up, but they, the kids will also receive a, um, insurance coverage with this insurance rate that we will be paying. And, um, the coaches and the referees will also receive, or, I'm sorry, just coaches involved, any volunteers, um, will receive that coverage. Um, the horse stall rental, that was also, um, a $10 per month added fee. We do take care of their, um, we provide the barns, we provide the water, the electric, um, the horse track for them to run on, the trails, uh, the horse manure removal, all of that, so just to help, help us main, be able to maintain, um, our parks and our services for the community. Um, I will say that if this is approved, um, the current bookings that are, that have already happened, uh, those rates won't change, even if they book something for the fall already and pay their fees and everything. We won't ask for an increase in, in that. And then, um, current sports registrations that are going on right now, we won't increase those. It'll just go to the next sports registration.
Grandfathered, they'd be grandfathered.
Yes, for the current registrations. Does anybody have any questions?
I got a couple for you real quick. Does that, uh, I didn't see any change. I just wanna make sure damaged deposits stay the same?
Uh, yes.
Okay, and then how many children, uh, can accompany one adult?
For the pool?
Yeah.
Well, as far as the family pass, it'd be, it's, a family pass would be a family of three. So, if it's two adults and one child, one adult, two children, um, it cannot be three children under the age of 14 for a family pool pass. So, it really just depends on that family. Um, but most of the ones that purchased pool passes last year were either one or two adults plus a child.
Okay. Um, and some of this increase would go to maintenance of the buildings, mainly referring to like the Horace Red Cross, Admin, James Roberts, John Miller.
It would all go into the park general fund and they would be able to maintain, um, the infrastructure as needed.
Oh, we'll see an increase in improvements on the maintenance of the buildings.
Well, yes, I mean, that's our goal either way. We, we are trying to maintain, um, there's a lot of things that we are working on improving, so that's something we're doing.
I know, we talked before, there's some big projects with roads that need replaced, that kind of thing on some of those buildings that
With what?
With some of the roofs.
Oh, roofs, yes, uh-huh.
So, um,
Yeah, yeah.
And do you anticipate any kind of drawback from like some of the sports because it's increasing so much?
I mean, they, possibly, but we also have a scholarship fund set up, so if there is any issues at all, um, they can fill out our scholarship paper and we can help find funding for that.
That's all I guess.
Um, you mentioned, and this just kind of brought this to my mind, how many kid, and maybe this is what you meant, maybe it isn't, but how many kids under age 14 can a 14-year-old bring in?
No.
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 No. How many, how many kids can accompany one adult? My concern is, I know, I know they said 14, we talked before, I just think 14 is even too young, because we've had so many problems that I think 14 is still young. And that, that really, as we talked before in the office, that was one of my major hangups with this. I get the increases for providing more maintenance for the park, more maintenance for the buildings, but we shouldn't have, not that we are stationing police officers there, but we shouldn't have an officer there, two officers there, all the time. And over the summertime, that eats up a lot of
Are you meaning like if they're over the age of 14, can they, can they, can a 14-year-old bring their five-year-old?
I mean, a group of 14-year-olds come in, that's a lot of trouble. Shouldn't we raise that up so they can be accompanied?
Well, they'll have one more, one warning if they haven't caused any issue and they're out. And there's no, and, and you didn't mention this, but no refund of their, of their pass.
How do we keep track of all that? Because that's a lot for a lifeguard to keep track of.
Well, we do, the managers write that down. We keep track of those that we give warnings to and we also notify their parents if we can get ahold of them and let them know, "Your child just received a warning. This is what happened."
So, they come in and, and give a phone number or whatever?
We, if we can get it from the child and then we can call the parents, then yes, we will notify them. That's what we did last year.
Did that work pretty good, or?
Um, no, we had about, I think I was saying nine, we had about nine that we had to, um, have leave the pool for the summer. Cause, and we did the three strikes.
We talked, we talked about the three strikes and the three strikes can go through the whole, the whole summer and then you start all over again. I mean, it's, if, if it's posted, I think you'll get more of a, of a result if it's two strikes. I mean, the first time you get the second chance. And then if, if it happens again, then you're out for the summer and you've lost your, your, uh, if it, if it's an individual pass, you've lost, there are no refunds for the rest of the season. And the consequences, I think, once they find out that's what's gonna happen, I think we'll, hopefully we'll improve that situation. I mean, you have to get tough to, I mean, I think three strikes and you're out, that's
That's a ton.
That's, yeah, that's a ton, absolutely. It's like, "I'm gonna give you another chance, well, I'm gonna give you another chance." You know, it's, it's, yeah.
Yeah.
That's what we had discussed.
I just got one more question. Uh, who's gonna enforce that 14-year-old rule and stuff as you're coming in? You got your young teenage up there taking money, guess, is it gonna build an adult around to say?
Yes, we, um, our managers are all adults. Um, I also have the assistant director, she'll be over there and they will be monitoring that.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, very closely, yeah.
And I think you mentioned, you, you defined an adult as over 18.
18, yeah, right.
Over 18.
Over 18.
Yeah.
All right.
Any other questions on this?
I would just go back and just say again that I think when we talked, if I'm, you correct me if I'm wrong, but I think I said that I think the minimum age ought to be 16, because if they're not responsible enough to even get there, we shouldn't be allowing them to roam, especially if, if I'm paying for something and if I'm paying for my family to go somewhere, I don't want a bunch of unsupervised people running around causing a lot of trouble. And I additionally don't want a constant police presence, because they're always getting called there for the 14 and under or 15 and under issues that we constantly have. They've got enough issues already. So, I would just leave it on that note that I disagree. I think the public school system and the park are two different environments and require two different approaches. And I'll leave it at that. Nothing against you.
No, it's fine.
No, I think it's a valid point. Um, there's two ways of looking at that. A, you can try it this way. If it doesn't work this year, you can change it next year. That's a pretty easy rule change to make, or if you wanna make a recommendation to pass it at 16, that's, council's right as well, so.
You'll kind of see
I don't disagree with you at all on that.
No, I get you.
And you'll, you'll kind of see it this year if the two and out will work, will improve things.
Right.
I think it will, though.
I, I think so too. I mean,
Because you put them on notice the first time.
And you enforce it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, gotta work.
I tried to go several times last year just to stand and watch. And it's amazing when I show up, everyone was on good behavior, so it didn't do any good for me to go, "Watch."
Well, I, I agree with Javon. With the 16, at least you've got their driver's license to prove how old they are. So, with their 14, it's just them saying they're 14.
If it's 16, they have one.
They don't have a driver's license at 16. It's 16 and a half.
Right.
Yeah, it's not necessarily at 16 that they have one. And, and a lot of kids aren't getting driver's licenses at 16. It's not like it was when we were kids. I mean,
Couldn't wait to get it.
Yeah, couldn't wait to do it.
I'm thinking about money for the pool, 14-year-olds, more 14-year-olds are gonna come, therefore a lot of 16-year-olds gonna come. The younger they are, the more they're gonna come.
Well, it comes just about being supervised.
Yeah.
But I think that the two and out, I think is at least a step in the right direction. And if, well, you said if it doesn't work, we can change it.
Yes.
Well, I guess the question goes, "What's your pleasure on this?" He's gonna be brave and make a motion.
I'll make a motion, uh, that we approve it as is, to be reviewed and actually wouldn't even have to be next year. I mean, it can be reviewed at any, at any time, couldn't it? I mean, if
Well, it's hard to change in the middle of the season when people's already paid.
Well, that's true.
If they buy a pass, you don't wanna change it.
Well, I'm not talking about the fees. I'm talking about
Even the age, because they're buying a pass based on age, you don't wanna do that. So, whatever you, whatever you establish, it's established for this year. If, if it doesn't work, then we can modify it next year.
Okay. Um, I'll move that we pass it as is.
I have a motion to approve pending orders 3936 on first reading as is. And a second, uh, all in favor, signify by, this is two roll call, sorry.
Yeah.
On the ordinance.
Councilman Collins?
No.
Uh, Councilwoman McQueen?
Yes.
Councilman Williams Jr.?
Yes.
Councilwoman Phillips?
Yes.
Councilman Rob?
Yes.
You have four to one.
Okay, I have a motion to suspend the rules.
So, move.
Second.
I have a motion, second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry. Any post, same sign? Argued up. Okay, there's a motion for third and final. I had a motion in several seconds. Uh, roll call, who, please?
Councilman Williams Jr.?
Yes.
Councilwoman Phillips?
Yes.
Councilman Rob?
Yes.
Councilman Collins?
No.
Councilwoman, Councilwoman McQueen?
Yes.
Four to one.
Motion for ordinance 3936 passes, so you might as well just stay it. We're not gonna change the order since she's already here and she can do her department reports.
I am updating this one that you've had, um, in your packet, that, um, it's the calendar, uh, the living well, aging well. You have one in your packet, so I just wanna give you an updated one, because I'm getting ready to talk about this. Um, so, onto my report. We are currently taking, uh, are still taking applications for lifeguards. We're getting close to a really good number I'd like to see. Um, and so, we're taking applications. Um, we're also going to, the way the process works with lifeguards is that you go in and you have to do like a pre-test. And so, um, the pre-test, if you pass, then you can move on to the class. And then if you move on to the class, then you can, um, you can become our lifeguard. And so, we wanna make sure we have plenty just in case, but, um, so we're, we're working on still accepting lifeguard applications, um, part-time summer maintenance as well. Um, we are taking applications for that. Um, let's see. We are working with HWC Engineering and the Foundation for our Five-Year Master Plan. And, uh, you may have already seen, and I believe I sent everyone an email with our, um, public survey. Um, you've probably seen it on Facebook, but, um, we are requesting that, um, community members take our public survey. And this is going to help us in planning our five-year park plan. So, um, we're gonna have that open through April. Um, we're gonna hold a public meeting in March, um, on March 12th from 6:00 to 7:00. That will go over, um, some of the results that we've acquired so far. It'll go, answer any questions, um, that anyone will have, uh, recommendations, things like that. So, um, please encourage others to, to take part in that survey. We would love to have, as, I would love to see a thousand participants. Um, today I checked and it's only been open for less than a week. And, um, we've had 307 so far. So, I would love to see a thousand. That's our goal. Um, I bribed my staff and said, "I'll buy them lunch if they, uh, we reach a thousand, if they push it out there." So, we'll see. Um, I met with Jessica and Brian from Community Benefits at Reed and they are wanting to partner with us. Last year, we got a grant from them. They're wanting to do a little bit of a bigger, um, partnership with us and, uh, help support some of our activities that we offer. So, I'm working on creating a spreadsheet for them of some of the things that we offer. And, um, they're going to take it to their board to see what it is that they can help us with. So, um, Living Well Aging Well is a good, um, group that's now happening at the park. And, um, and then summer discovery, uh, youth sports programs, this would go along with helping, um, with the scholarship fund that we were just talking about. So, um, and then any community events, uh, that we have. So, that's a partnership I'm working on them with. And, um, hopefully in the next couple of months, I'll have some more information to report on that. Um, we did some cleanup, oh, I'll start here. So, um, we, the Whitewater Career Center came to us and asked if they could work on a project for us. So, we had, um, we were in desperate need of some new picnic tables. So, they made picnic tables for us and some roadblocks. So, um, the guys were going over to pick them up and they showed up to this. So, we took a picture and, um, they wanted to display their artwork there. Uh, they had a lot of fun building it. So, um, our guys have been working on painting everything and getting them ready for the summer. Um, we also had to do, is it not working? We just get to show one picture?
It's a great picture.
Yeah, it is.
It's not working. Okay. Well, we did some cleanup at, um, the baseball fields and that's what I was gonna show you. We had, um, a dugout blowover and so, we were cleaning that up. And then, um, we also had our, try it again. There we go. So, our dugout blew over during a storm in January. So, um, we've been cleaning that up and we're gonna work on repairing it. And then, um, the guys went over, we've, we've been discussing for about a year whether we were gonna keep this restroom or tear it down. And it just continues to be an issue for us. So, the guys went over to just test it and see what it was gonna do. So, they tapped it over here in this right corner and that's what happened. He, he barely even pushed on it. So, um, it was already starting to fall down and he pushed on it a little bit more and that's what happened. So, it came down pretty easy. So, um, liability, we wanted that to come down. They called me right away and they said, "Hey, this, we barely touched it and it was already falling." So, um, they went ahead and cleaned it up. So, they went ahead and cleaned it up. And that's what it looks like now. We'll probably put a picnic table out there or something, or leave it that way. So, I wanted to share that with you guys and let you know that we did clean that up, and we're going to work on repairing that dugout as well. Soccer, T-ball, softball, and baseball registrations are taking place right now. Living Well Aging Well, I wanted to show you what's been going on for the month of February. This is, Living Well Aging Well is something I presented last year, a long time ago, and have been talking about it. Well, we have accomplished it, and it has been going fabulous, I think. We have had walking club, pickleball, shuffleboard, cards and conversations. We're doing a health screening next week and a nutritional class. So, these are some that have been participating. Shuffleboard, we have each week. There's pickleball and cards and conversations. So, they have really enjoyed coming. They're talking about bringing their friends. I gave you March's calendar, so please share the information. We are also working with the senior center. They're going to bring over a vanload of people, hopefully, to come and join us. They love our calendar. They love the activities that we're providing, and they love that we are offering gym activities because it's something they can't do. And so, they're really excited about that and wanting, they want to also participate with us. So, those are some activities that are taking place, and they're going to continue each month. We'll change up the calendar, add something new, and do some fun things. Bunnies and brownies. I skipped over, Logan went to a summit, a camp summit, this month, and he, it was for camp, summer discovery campers that other parks are doing. And so, he went through a training. A couple of things that he took away, or he took a lot of things away, but the one thing that he really liked was the junior counselors. So, that was those who are aged thirteen and fourteen. They will come in like a camper, so they'll pay the fee, but they get it at a discounted rate. And then, they get to be a junior counselor, and they get to follow the counselors around and play with the kids and learn what it is to be a counselor. So then, when they are of age to be on staff, then they know what it's like. They've kind of been training for a couple of years so that when they come in to be a counselor, they know what to expect and everything. I think that's a great idea and option, so it may be something that we look at for the future. And then, Grace was certified in lifeguard management. I thought that was a very important class for her to take because she will be overseeing the pool and the lifeguards this summer. Some dates coming up, March 21st is bunnies and brownies at the Miller Building from five to seven. We will have pictures with the bunny, and lots of activities and booths will be set up there. Breakfast with the bunny on March 23rd. April 8th is Eclipse, is the Eclipse. We will have parking at the Roberts Park Racetrack and then the soccer complex, and parking will be $10. We will have glasses for sale as well. We don't have them yet, but they'll be coming in. And then, elders lunch is May 16th. And then, again, March 12th is our public meeting at the Miller Building from six to seven to discuss our survey and our master plan.
For the public that may not know, can you specify the age for the elders lunch?
Eighty and older for the elders lunch. And Mary Ellen, Mary Ellen?
Mary Ann.
Mary Ann, thank you. I do that every time. She is always looking for volunteers to come and help serve lunch. She puts on a fabulous dinner, or lunch, for everyone. I, the work that she puts into it is amazing. And last year was my first one, and I was just blown away by it. So, that is for eighty and older, and it is May 16th. So, she wanted me to make sure to share that at each meeting and make sure that gets out there. Does anybody have any questions? Thank you for all of your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief Bowles.
As soon as you have to wake them up.
They fell asleep out there.
All right, good evening.
Good evening.
Everybody's got a copy of my report for the month of January. Overtime a little more. That was, I think, the last week of the holidays. We had a swap call out and whatnot, so I was still down, two officers at that point. Yaliza Fields, 2,166. In our incident reports, we had thirty-six total accidents in the month of January, and I suspect it'll be up for February's. Total of eight hundred and fifty calls of service. Any questions on that incident report? All right, as far as our department goes, training hours, we had a hundred and forty-nine hours of department training, sixteen hours for K-9 training. We did four school searches and one demo. Our detectives in January took in nineteen cases. They closed sixteen of them, made five arrests, and there's three ICAC open cases that they're currently working on. As far as drugs in January, we had twenty-two grams of marijuana, five grams of heroin, fentanyl, seventeen grams of meth, sixty-five pills, and fifteen needles. Just one other item, so council's aware, we got our vehicles a couple of weeks ago. We're just waiting for the equipment to come in, to be roomworthy, so. Any questions?
Sure.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Stuoff, come on, sir.
All right, good evening, councilman.
Good evening.
Ordinance report for January 2024. During the month of January, I had forty-six separate ordinance violations that I addressed, twenty-one of those being relating to accumulation of trash and rubbish, twelve expired plates, abandoned vehicles, or demolition derby cars that we got corrected, six relating to parking position, majority of those people parking between the road and the sidewalk and local grass space and jumping the curb to leave their car there to, I don't know whether it was to keep them worried about snow or, honestly, I think they were just trying to get it out of the road a little bit and still made the violation. Two interior furnitures outside of homes, one vehicle obstructing the sidewalk, was parked completely across the sidewalk, blocking any pedestrian usage. One dilapidated building, one prohibited sign issue, one vehicle obstruction of a street, and one public information request. Last month, I talked about separating the city into seven focus areas, and the majority of these ordinances that I addressed in January came out of focus area one, and that area is almost wrapped up. I hope to have it wrapped up this week. If not, maybe the first one next week. At that point, I'm going to jump over to the first impression tours, and we'll be starting on Central Avenue, running from First to Seventeenth Street, right through downtown. And I'm going to be focusing on not only residential, but also commercial properties here in the city to try to get some issues resolved and really help beautify what people see when they come through our downtown. Any questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good job.
Great job.
Director Culver.
Howdy.
Hello.
I have an ADA report, a compost report, the street department, the utility report, various other ones, so I'm going to get started.
You got a minute each.
Let me get started. No, I'm going to be very brief. Most of it's pretty exciting stuff, but if you do have questions, you can ask me. But I did want to tell you just about a couple of quick things. I reported to the, I asked the Board of Works for permission today to explore a UV project at the wastewater plant, which would replace our chlorine gas with ultraviolet disinfection methods. One of the interesting components, I was explaining to them today, we have a, looks like we're going to have about a million and a half dollars left from, over from our head works project. Once that thing all got on track, we've been in real good shape, coming in under budget. So basically, all the contingency budget that we had set aside, we're not going to have to use much of it. So, that's a million and a half dollars. But the part I wanted to tell you about is that we took all the funds from that project, twenty-three million dollar project, and invested them early on. And over the last year and a half, we have been fortunate enough to be in a window of great bond returns, which is really about the only investment we're able to make in government. And we have, so far, through the end of the year, made nine hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars on those investments, on those investment funds. I'm super proud of that.
Right.
Should be.
That is money that we can use for real things. So, what we intend to use it for is this UV project, and we leverage that, those extra funds, these interest-invested funds, and then we are going to go for an Oprah grant of seven hundred thousand dollars. Hopefully, that'll be just about enough to do that project, so. The only other thing I wanted to tell you, we've been lucky enough at the street department to take possession of our new Dodge 2500 pickup with the plow and salt, salt spreader on the back, which we got a good chance to use Friday night, as you all know. And we also have taken possession of our new John Deere 320 Paco, and that is a really nice piece of equipment. So, now we're just waiting on our new loader to get here, and that will, how much was the loader? I don't remember. It's bad time to ask.
Yeah, you got too many numbers through my head. I'll never remember.
Hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of equipment that we've been needing for many, many years, and finally, we've got, so. Did anybody have any questions about any of the reports? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Director Pousley.
That was fast, bro.
Well, that was very good.
Let's start with the January report. We had six hours, thirty-four minutes of meeting production and eighteen hours, sixteen minutes of original production. Our YouTube analytics for the month, we had eleven thousand fifty-six views, totally two thousand forty-five hours, but currently, three thousand five hundred and twenty subscribers. That's just on YouTube, of course. That doesn't count cable views. And that was the monthly report. Last month, I got to the annual report. I don't know if you had a chance to look through that or not. We didn't really get a chance to present it last month, so. But it has a lot of data in it. We do year-to-year programming totals. So, for instance, we did a hundred and seventy-eight total programs of events and meetings for a hundred and seventy-six, almost a hundred and seventy-seven hours. And then add in what we do in the studio, we had a total of three hundred and seventy-six programs at two hundred and seventy-one hours. All of that is broken down on the next few pages of the report, so you can go through that and be bored. But we record everything, so. And then, on the next pages over there, you can see the events that we reproduced, which shows a lot of sports production, obviously, too. The next page is our YouTube analytics for the year, as well as the city's Facebook information. So, the nice thing is that we see increases in viewership and views. For the views for YouTube, we had a hundred and almost ten thousand views on YouTube. That's eighteen thousand minutes watched, as mentioned before, just over thirty-five hundred subscribers. On Facebook, we've got four thousand one hundred and thirty-five followers on Local TV3, five thousand five hundred followers on City of Connersville, that's the Facebook page, and Community Calendar has one thousand nine hundred followers. So, I think we're reaching everybody. So, that's pretty good. We're really getting it out there. The, let's see. And then, we have the Connersville job postings, which we have forty-five hundred members on there now.
Wow.
So, and that really gets out there. Now, I will say, for those of you who are using that site, it is a constant tedious job to keep the spam off of there. You would not believe how many times we get hit with stuff. Especially lately, it seems to be everybody wants to sell their Taylor Swift tickets, so. I don't believe those are true.
Well, we actually got one, was that Friday I sent you a message? I saw on Friday, it was someone bashing the police department over something that happened, and it was spam. Wouldn't it be real?
That wasn't from here. It wasn't about us, and I don't know where that came from. Nor do I know how that got posted, but they're gone now. And then, the next few pages are just our finances for the year. The most important thing is that we came in under budget, which we always try to do. And then, our final page, I always like to put together photographs for the year. So, there's our photographs for the year. You'll notice in the upper right corner, we got the mayor, the volunteer during the production of a football game once, so we really appreciate that.
It was fun. I had fun.
It gets a little cold up there on top of the press box, you know, sometimes.
It does.
Any questions?
I do have a comment. I just want to put this in council's minds. John and I went to the State House, I don't know, a month ago, maybe? I don't remember where we went up there. Just trying to do some education with some of the local legislator on the bill that they passed.
Sorry about that.
He likes your dog.
It was about a bill they passed requiring live streaming services, which we're already ahead of the game, but what they're asking us to do, we still have the staff to provide everything.
And they're expanding it, too.
And they're going to expand it. So, this is another piece of the puzzle. They restrict our income, then they increase what we got to do. It's a very frustrating process, so we've been talking about this for a while. We're going to have to have more conversations because two things are happening, the requiring more streaming services, which requires people to do that. Fortunately, we invested in all the equipment with our COVID money, so we're good on equipment. But it's going, we don't know how we're going to do it. Compounding on that is, we fund TV3 with cable franchise fees for the most, about all of its cable franchise fees at this point. And those are on a decline, and then the federal side, they're looking to eliminate those in totality. So, we have a problem now. Now, the state's forcing us to do more services, funding is going down, if not going to be eliminated. We got to come up with a creative solution to fund this in order to comply with the new state law. So, that's just something else in the back of your mind. Not trying to scare everything with numbers, but I want you to, I tend to live the whole picture, and I got to do a better job explaining the whole picture sometimes. I'm not very good at that. But that is an upcoming need that we've got to figure out for 2025. We're ahead of the game. Most communities don't have what we have.
They don't even know it's coming. I really don't believe they have a clue.
They do. We talk about it at mayor's conferences now.
Oh, good. Takes effect next year, so.
But they don't know how to, they don't even know where to begin. It's expensive. I mean, we told them, like, we spent a hundred thousand dollars just on equipment, just on cameras, and that's not including everything that you need. So, that's just bare minimum. So, every board meeting's going to have to be livestreamed. I mean, it's going to be intense.
It's not just that. They require the agendas, the minutes, posted and accessible. It's a lot of requirements, so. That's July of next year that they start.
Yeah.
And they're not done with the session this year, and they want to add to it this year to take effect next year, so.
We went up there, met with them, tried to explain to them. I don't think we got anywhere, do you?
No. No. I actually called and talked to the author of the bill just to try to express.
We met with him. Oh, no, no, wrong one.
Yeah, the co-author. But I talked to the actual author, and I tried to explain. My concern is also, all of the surrounding small communities, they're just as much responsible. They're not prepared for this. They don't have a way to do this. And I tried to express that, and they didn't seem to care.
One of the questions we asked was, what's going to happen for the communities that don't comply? And the answer we got was, it's a case-by-case basis.
Maybe.
That doesn't give us any clarification. So, like I said, we're ahead of the game already, but we're not there. So, that's, those are conversations we're going to be having here shortly. I'm trying to set up some meetings, because it's going to require us to count in the schools, because school is part of it, too. So, we've got another piece of the puzzle. So, I just wanted to bring out your attention, so you know that's coming.
Anybody has any questions about that, I'm pretty well versed on it now, so.
Uh, yeah. All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Chief Harden.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Sure. Okay.
Good evening.
Everyone has this really nice blazed overlook right at this point in time, so I'm glad I've got this down to about ninety minutes, so.
You got three.
You got three? Okay. Everyone should have a copy of my January 2024 report. Everyone should have a copy of my January 2024 report. We had 324 calls for service. We had a total of 6,914 miles fleetwide. Did have one EMT retirement, and that was filled with a promotion from within for part-time. And had one paramedic reservation, which is pending, being filled. Seen my fuel usage and fuel tax rebate that was submitted. Did do a pre-build for one of the new ambulances. Had that last month. That is the second one. So hopefully, we're well on our way to getting those this year. I keep pounding them for a more concrete deadline and their answer is they just don't know, but it will be this year, so. And in January, had two new part-time hires. So we really, we really rely on our part-time. It's also used as a vetting process. So when we go to hire someone for a full-time position, we hire from, from our part-time, from our part-time list. Does anybody have any questions on January? So everyone should have a copy of the 23 report for the year. I'm just going to hit the very brief highlights. So we answered 3,858 calls for service. That was down 22 calls from 2022. Over 48,000 miles, generated $1.02 million in revenue, which was up 20.7% over 2022.
Does that include, I was going to ask earlier, does that include some of the rate increases?
Yes.
And that started when?
Jul, June 1st or July 1st.
So you got about six months of rate increase. Does that help out a lot?
Yes, yes. So, and those are, yes, so that was, that was a big part of it. We're also seeing some of the insurance companies raising what they're paying as part of negotiations. So we're seeing increased revenue from them, so. But it's a constant battle to get some of them to pay, so. We added Lucas 6PR devices. That was through grant. We added binder lifts, which are, basically gives people handles. Added those on all of our ambulances. That was, once again, through grants. You can see a lot of the training that we did. Did have one graduate from paramedic school who's now functioning as paramedic and had two more that started in 2023. You can see the hours and things like that. The only other thing I kind of point out is I always get the, oh, I bet you guys are busy on the weekends. And as long as I've kept track, the last five years, Saturday, Sunday don't even come close to our busiest days. So our busiest day of the week is Wednesday. It's usually Tuesday, Thursdays. It kind of switches back and forth, so it's Wednesday. Second busiest is Tuesday, followed by Friday. So it's just kind of interesting that how the calls fall and what days and things like that. There's no rhyme or reason to it. I've watched it. There's no rhyme or reason to it, so. I know there's a lot of information in there. If you don't have a question tonight, that's fine. I know you've got a lot of information. Anytime anybody has a question, all my numbers, my contacts, my emails, everything is on the front page. More than happy to answer any questions if anybody has any time.
I got one in general.
Go ahead.
So I'll hurry.
No, you're fine.
How does, if at all, how does the issues with Anthem, Blue Cross, and all that with REED affect us, if at all?
It doesn't. Anthem, Blue Cross, they are one of the big players, so they do try to strong-arm where they can. They are, but they have raised their allowable rates over the last few years. So, but as far as it directly impacting with, with the REED situation, it really doesn't have a, have a play with us, so. Happy to like.
Thank you.
Assistant Chief Stevens. Almost said Chief Jones.
They say the best part.
That's right.
All right, monthly report. Everybody has a copy. So for January and for overtime, we had $4,253.92. And of that was main tire shortage, $3,605.20. And the FLSA was $648.72. Fuel usage for the month of January, we used 392.36 gallons of fuel. Total cost of $1,443.53. Incidents, we had a hundred, a total of 190 incidents for the month of January. 29 of those were fire incidents, 152 were EMS, and we had nine auto accidents. Training hours for the month of January, we had a total of 48 and a half instructed hours. 35 and a half of those were fire and 13 of those were EMS-related. And we had 17 inspections for the month of January and we did not have any fires to investigate for that. Any questions on the monthly report? Go ahead.
Do you have any ISO?
ISO, yep. That was my next thing. Last Wednesday, we had our ISO audit. Everything went really well. The gentleman that came, he was very happy to see that we had all of our ducks in a row and we were ready for him. And I think Scott, like Scott said this earlier today, that, you know, he set aside a whole day for us and he was only here for two hours because we had everything ready for him and he was very complimentary and very impressed. So it sounds good for us. We're hopefully get to that next, next stage, or that next step on our ISO, so.
No, he kind of glossed over that a little quickly, but that took a lot of work for you and Scott.
It's been two years. It was two years ago in April, Scott and I went to a class. And since then, we've been changing basically how the fire department operates. And it's not, I don't want to take credit. I mean, it's just as much, the guys on shift, they trained. Scott, you know, Scott, you know, the guys on shift, they've trained and trained and got our training hours up, which is a huge thing on the ISO. It's nine of our 50 points, so, I mean, or, yeah, 50 points, so.
You hear me talk about ISO a lot, and Chief Jones talks about ISO a lot. You say, why does that matter? It matters with your insurance ratings for your citizens.
On your homeowner.
So it would change your homeowner's policy pretty drastically. The more we reduce that number, the better your insurance premiums are going to be. So that's why we focus so hard on that.
And it not only affects homeowners, but it's something businesses look at, too.
Oh, absolutely.
The insurance rates for businesses are huge.
Insurance rate for any business.
We're currently at four and our goal is to get to a three and I feel pretty confident, so.
I remember when we were in eight.
Yeah, yeah. So we've come a long way and, you know, we're, you know, so. It's very encouraging and hopefully, we get there. We won't know for four, six months, so. It's kind of, and it'll come in effect, so.
I personally just want to say, good job, both of you guys. You worked the tail off on that.
Yeah, the guys, all the guys on apartment, I mean, I'm sure, the changes, I mean, it's hard to change stuff as you're going, you know, and they were willing to make changes and train more and, you know, the way they put it in. I mean, it even came down to how they put it into, you know, document in their training hours. You know, we have to do it a certain way now just to, you know, situate it for them, so when they come and ask for Kevin.
Everyone in the community appreciates you guys' hard work on this. It impacts everybody.
It sure does.
And it also helps our response time, so.
Yeah, so.
Thank you, sir. Sorry, anybody have any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, going on an old business. Anyone have any old business? Miscellaneous business? Want to add to a clip for the public? I'll take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Motion second. I want to favor signature by signing an eye. Any opposed, same sign. Have a good evening.